Good evening. We are so glad to see each other. Good evening. It is six o'clock. It is six o'clock and if everyone could take their seat, that would be wonderful. And if it's okay with you, Eric, I'm gonna, and council, I'm gonna move three to two. I'm gonna move the award before that, after public comment. Okay. Good evening. It is 6:01 actually on September 9th. At 6:01, I'm calling this regularly called meeting of the Dunwoody City Council to order, unless there's an objection, seeing none. Councilman Lambert, I presume you're on here? Actually can't tell because I don't have a mouse, but if you need us, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you. And Chief Carlson? Oh, no. Sorry. Pledge of invocation. I've never done this before. Inocation and pledge.
Please rise for the invocation. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
Now Chief Carlson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Tonight, I've got the distinct privilege of honoring one of, one of our hardest working sergeants. This all started several months ago. Councilmember Henigan sent me an email and he says, he's like, I think at the time I was deputy chief. He's like, deputy chief, can we use this device? And the device he was talking about was what we call a life vac. That's now, these life vacs prevent victims from choking. So ironically, the next day I'm driving into work and I'm listening to WSB, the evening, or excuse me, the morning news, and there was an Acworth officer successfully deployed a life vac and saved a life. And I was like, well, what are the odds of councilmember Henigan sending this to me? You know, there's a success story that's out there. And so I reached out to my admin sergeant. I said, hey, give me, give me a quote on what we need to outfit the officers to have this lifesaving device in their vehicle. So we went to our Dunwoody Police Foundation and made a presentation and I said, you know, we could definitely use these within, for our officers, and that could potentially save a life. Well, on August 12th, at about 5:53 PM, officers were dispatched to a home here in Dunwoody in reference to an 18-month-old choking on food. Sergeant Nelson arrived and found the child unconscious, blue in color, and not breathing effectively. A life vac choking device was used, which removed pieces of food and fluid from the child's airway. To Cal Fire Engine 12 arrived and assisted with continued care. Once in the ambulance, the child regained consciousness, slowly began breathing on his own, and his vitals began to stabilize. The child was transported to Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, Scottish Rite by AMR, received further medical treatment, and the child is recovering from this incident. So this just, this is just another story of showing how every idea can come together. And, and you know, starting from councilmember seeing, you know, this lifesaving device, us having the resources, if everybody from the Dunwoody Police Foundation could please stand, going to them and knowing the amount of work they do behind the scenes, free of charge, and the hard work they do to make sure that we have the funding for equipment and training for our officers. And to be able to have this success story with Sergeant Nelson being at the right place at the right time, being trained on this device, and a life was saved. At this time, I would like to commend Sergeant Nelson. And we do have an award for him. It's called our lifesaving award that they will wear on their uniform. And if you all would like to come down, I would like to present Sergeant Nelson.
Thank you, John. Can we, before you leave, can we get out in the, yeah, bring in the, we'll get, we'll get out. And also, did you bring your family? I'm sorry, is your family? Yeah, we'll do that. Let's do the foundation. Sergeant Nelson, in Judaism, there's an expression, I can't say the Hebrew, but when you save a life, you save the world. And I know I speak for all of us up here with extreme gratitude that you were able to save that little, that child, that baby. And to the Police Foundation, you're an important part of this story. And to deputy, to chief, and John, it's just a wonderful series of things that came together in a way that this happened. And so we are incredibly grateful for your work, and then the work of all your colleagues, of course, because you do yeoman's duty for our city and our community. And if, as always, if there's anything you need, you let us know because clearly we're ready and able to keep you updated with all the relevant and necessary equipment. So thank you again, and congratulations, and a big amount of gratitude from all of us. Thank you. Oh, it's my job. Okay. Public comments. Ali, again, I know you're here because you filled out the card, but you like to sit behind.
Madam Mayor, were you gonna move something first?
Oh, yes. Can I get, just after public comments, can I get a motion to move three to two, just so that the judge?
Okay, we forget to know.
Yeah, we'll do public comment and then do it. Come ahead, sorry. You'll have three minutes when the clock is ready. Is it ready? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, City Council, for having me here today. I actually wanted to make some general comments in light of the budget conversations that are happening. I know this is not the budget meeting, but I won't be able to make any of them. And unfortunately, I haven't been able to watch or see the kind of deliberations on the budget. But taking a peek at the proposed budget, there's a couple of items there that I thought were interesting and stood out. So I simply just wanted to bring them to your attention as you're having the conversation to consider. The first one is, it does seem when looking at the budget that it does kind of meet the agenda of the people, I guess, is what I call it. I've been to a lot of these different council meetings and it seems like different things that are important are correctly being correlated to the budget. I know some people don't like the bike path, but that's a different thing. The other thing is, when I looked into it, it looked like they were expecting more money in interest payments. I spot checked some of the records that we have and some of the CDs and money markets that the city of Dunwoody has. Some of those big CDs, we did really well with interest rates, but I think they're coming due at the end of the year and the beginning of next year. I would say unless we've got a giant pile of money, that I think you guys should consider that those interest rate assumptions should probably be going down. Another thing is, I did notice that there was extra headcount for IT. I think one of the meetings, I actually talked a little bit about adding more headcount to the city of Dunwoody with all the extra stuff going on. But I do know a lot of companies and a lot of, you know, different things are outsourcing those positions. So maybe something to consider if, instead of adding four more people at full salaries and benefits, if any of that could be potentially outsourced. Another item that I've noticed that wasn't on there is grants. Looks like one of the grants expired, but I don't think we do the best job at Dunwoody of maybe actively seeking what federal or other type of grants are available for us. Again, I don't know everything on what happens here, but I would say if there is a possibility of exploring those options, I think we could definitely benefit if there are federal, state, or local grants that we're just not taking advantage of. And the last item is, well, two other items. One item is police. So we've increased budget for police, which is fantastic. I've been pushing for that. I know a lot of people have been pushing for that. I do see the headcount number that we want to add is awesome. I know we've added some of those positions. I would say as High Street comes up and as we're still actively and diligently looking for those headcount numbers, if we can maybe look at putting some extra money into like an overtime budget, just for all the extra stress that'll happen to the city with all these extra activities next year, that would be helpful. And then I've noticed also that we've got a budget for legal. You know, I know when we had that debacle a couple of years ago with the police department and legal, and it was extremely expensive and it annoyed a lot of people. I have noticed that we put some money in the budget for that, and I guess that would be an appropriate amount. My time's running up. So besides that, those are just the quick notes that I noted in the budget. I simply just wanted to bring them to your attention. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we get to the next section, I'd like to ask for a moment silence in memory of the lives that were lost last week at Upland High School, just because we can and we should. Thank you. John, now you can make the motion, please, to move two to three, three to two.
I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure you understood your thing.
Yes.
So you want to move item number three, recognition of Chief Judge up to number two. So a motion to amend the agenda, moving up item number three up to number two.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. All right. Londa, it's your turn. Okay.
Use the microphone.
You have to use the microphone. So usually you face, right, and then, and then, yeah, that works.
So the Council of Municipal Court Judges of Georgia is rewarding Judge Chief, or Chief Judge, I'm sorry, or Chief Judge, Judge Hugh Powell, with a certificate of recognition for his 25 years of service to the state of Georgia for being a judge. He's been a judge with us now for 15 years. He was our first chief judge. And we just want to recognize him as the Council of Georgia judges wants to as well. We also have two of our other associate judges here, Judge Wolf and Judge Shidel is here as well.
Thank you for your service. Yes, we'll come down.
Say a few words? Nah.
Eric, you're up.
Thank you. And Mayor, thanks. Thanks again. We've, city's had a great day, starting with our budget hearing at 10 o'clock this morning. And I want to thank the council again for their dedication, for spending all day with staff to go over, over the budget. But what we have now is the City Manager's monthly report, ending September 6th, 2024. The Parks Department, we have Waterford Park Playground Structures are moving through production and on track to be on site in late September. Also, we have the Tennis Court resurfacing scheduled to begin on the 5th, so last week of September, so that's underway. Also, we have the monument signs for Brook Run Park and Dunwoody Nature Center are complete. Couple of events I want to point out that are coming up, September 14th, Groovin' on the Green with, and then also September 19th, Dunwoody Food Truck Thursday, Park and Rec Month. This was the July rain date, since we had rained out during that time. We also have our new Park and Rec Guide leaf, which will be coming out very soon, if you hasn't already reached your house. Also, we did install our new portable restrooms at Wildcat Park, Homecoming Park, and the Brook Run Dog Park. Those are three locations we thought needed immediate attention, so we added the restrooms there. Also, we have an application that's been submitted for Georgia Council for the Arts Facility Grant. We're requesting $41,000 towards the installation of a new wheelchair lift at Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center. We'll know about that grant in the middle of next month. Under police, we have our, we have our second ambassador, reported for duty. And y'all saw the new ambassador vehicle on the street today. We have one of the two are in, the other will be in tomorrow. And so look for that on the street. We have two positions still to fill. The chief is working diligently to get those two positions filled. And as, as we know, the ambassadors, just so the public understands, they are, they're not police officers, but they're kind of people who assist with the police, give some relief to the police for different kind of duties. And it also can, is also a training ground for anybody who may want to also be a police officer. They can start with that role and then be introduced to police, to policing in Dunwoody. Our new Citizen Police Academy kicked off in August, and the classes will take place every week through October 29th. We are having a free child seat safety check at City Hall on the 16th of September. We have our new canine. I think most of y'all have met our new canine, River, who was purchased by the Dunwoody Police Foundation. This dog is to help with, you know, anybody who needs comforting or different things for both the public and officers or other employees. I've met the dog numerous times. Detective Elback is responsible for the dog. And River is a very calm, calm dog. I think, like I said, most of y'all have met River. And if not, let me know. We'll schedule a meeting where y'all can see her. Couple of things in the workload activities, I'm just gonna hit the highlights here. You know, we do still have some generalized threats that have occurred. Person that was wanted for homicide, the US Marshals got involved with that one. Some events at Peachford Hospital, civil disputes, child neglect, death investigation, cruelty to children, overdose, and a fatality crash on 285. I kind of ran through it from that aspect. Read it in more detail in the public, of course. This is available to the public. There's a data crime sheet. There's a link in the report for that. But that's what our police have to deal with on a, on a daily basis. And so we have a lot of respect for our officers and we appreciate them choosing Dunwoody to work for. The gateway sign, this was mentioned some this morning during the budget meeting. There's a picture of where that sign's actually going on the wall that Michael Starling discussed this morning there along, in front of the Marriott. And so last week when I drove over there to take a look at it, it was underway. So please take a look at that sometime this week, if you have time, to see one of our first gateway sign going up. We have four of our six plaza areas have been completed on Asher Dunwoody Path, as part of the Phase One Path. As was noted this morning, this is probably one of the busiest corridors we have for pedestrians. And I'm excited to have that open very soon, or completed very soon. We also have our annual paving contract will resume later this month. This is the remaining part of the streets that were scheduled for this year, so that will be completed. Our comp plan continues to mature, going through the process of press releases, social media, webpage, and digital ads. We have a workshop tomorrow night over at a park place for the comp plan, public workshop. We're anticipating a large turnout there. Within the communications area, there's a link in here. It's a new link for the stories that we have for August 2024. So click on that at your leisure. Under community development, a lot of activity under the data area, 448 inspections, code enforcement is staying busy. And we have a very responsive team there. But this just gives a indicator of soil erosion permits, other permits that were issued. Still a healthy number of permits to show a growing, a lot of investment being put into Dunwoody. The economic development, they continue to work on retention meetings and other business touchpoints. As far as recruitment, they had 19 recruitment meetings last month to try to encourage more people to come to Dunwoody and have their businesses called Dunwoody home. We have under finance, we did send out our budget on Friday, August 30th. So that went out, and that's on the street now. We've had our budget committee meeting. We have two meetings next month to finalize the budget. And also, our monthly finance report was published on the finance webpage. Take a look at that. If you have any questions, please let me or our finance director, Richard Plato, know about that. An exciting piece of information here internally, our conference rooms are being updated, the technology in those. You know, since, and we moved into this, into this building pre-COVID, after COVID, we have a lot more meetings online that y'all are aware of, you know, with different groups. So we wanted to update that technology to the, to modern day standards. Municipal court disposed of 528 cases and reset 35 cases next month. They do a great job moving that through. Our amnesty for, they went August 8th. That was the hearing for our amnesty program. We had 31 defendants with warrants cleared, and they appeared in court. We collected $6,524 in outstanding fines and fees. Each year, that number is lower than it was from the first time that we put amnesty in, but it does clear the record. It's a great program for anybody who needs to come before the judge to get cleared. The final thing I'll mention here is under HR, our annual training for employees. Our no harassment policy is scheduled for later this month. And we do have our wellness committee sponsoring and NGO screening. And also, our healthy cookout will be in October as well. And I encourage you all, the council, if possible, to make it to that cookout. It was excellent last time we had it. And I'm looking forward to that again this year. I'm glad to answer any questions the council may have.
Questions? That's Catherine.
Hi, thanks, Eric. Your report mentions that Narcan will be installed in city facilities. Do you want to tell the public what facilities it will be installed in?
The, is the chief here?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. He's behind the column. Didn't come up.
I had the same question, and then also, like, how it's accessible and kind of, if we can kind of describe that program and what it looks like.
I missed the question.
The Narcan, Narcan.
Installation.
So about the AED installations, Narcan.
Installation of Narcan kits throughout city facilities.
I'll have to get back to you on that.
It is in parks.
Not police.
Oh, sorry. I missed, I didn't hear correctly.
Is Rachel here?
No, she is not.
Okay, we're just gonna answer.
I'll go, I'll tell you what, we are, we're gonna install those in the various locations where we have more, where there's an active center, you know, such as the art center and in that area where there's some, where there's a, somebody that can administer over that program. But we can get you at more, yes. Near, well, we didn't want to have the drug just sitting out in a park by itself. Yes, we do. We do. And that, the only difference there is the way that those tell us how to use, I mean, they tell you how to use them. The other, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how to use that, to be honest with you, but we will get that information to you. And I apologize for not having more detailed information on that.
And it'll be about training too, as we saw in the high school when they did training and then it was used. I think it's gonna need training.
Absolutely. A hundred percent. We will get you that information.
So Catherine's question led me to a completely different question. That's how my mind works. When you're talking about city facilities, any update on the skate park building? And the fire is, maybe we'll have to get information later on, but just curious.
We will get you that.
How that building is operational again and.
Right. I don't have any new information on that, but I will get that for you.
Anybody else, John?
I'll jump into the Narcan aspect. At work, they are having the AEDs, they have Narcan, they got the life vac actually. So it's the box of safety, whatever you thought was appropriate, it was all added in there. So again, the life vac, happy that it worked out the way it did, that the city followed through. Happy all the way around. Win, 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 win. I would love to get some publicity on this and make sure that the people know that this life vac thing is out there. Anyway, I just think it's another tool that people should know about and have available. At one point, I publicized the fact that Narcan can be purchased at CVS by anybody at any time. It's at the prescription counter, but anybody can buy it for any reason. And if you have teenagers in the house, again, nobody has a drug addict and nobody has a drug problem, but you never know and you might need something at your house. So just.
And you don't need, just to be clear, you don't even need a prescription.
You don't need a prescription. You can just go and get Narcan, right, off, you know, from the pharmacist.
They have to hand it.
So just FYI, it's all about safety, and if we can help each other and be prepared for whichever comes our way, let's do so. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
This was also in the Parks section, the RFQ for the HVAC replacement services at city, at Dunwoody City Hall. I know that's in the 2025 budget, so we're just kind of proactively going after it. Maybe it'll come a little lower.
That's, that's where our goal is, is to try to, we wanted to, we had actually a pre-bid meeting on that to see how many people were interested in that. I think we had about three companies that showed interest in the meeting. It wasn't a mandatory meeting, but we're hoping to get very good prices to have that system replaced, our systems, or.
Speaking of AEDs, many of us viewed the portable AEDs in Savannah at a conference. I don't know if Rachel's had time to follow up with it, but it would be interesting to pilot one to see if, if it's effective, like on a trail or something and can stay. I mean, a lot of our questions was about how you keep it safe from vandalism. But, oh, Chief has something to say.
Mayor, I can speak on that.
Okay.
We purchased five of those and worked with Rachel to get those installed. So we're gonna have them installed at Brook Run Park. There are security measures in place. Number one, it has an alarm if somebody opens the door. It has a camera. So whoever opens the door is gonna film them. The alarm will send it to us. So we'll get a notification that, hey, our AED box has been opened or deployed. So I know there's one at Purnishaw. I think there was two at Brook Run.
Wow.
We have a five, five total.
That's awesome.
We work with Brandon to, because they needed power, but we're gonna be mounting them on a wall. They're not gonna be freestanding. So once we, once we, you know, get all that in place, working with Parks and everybody, we'll make sure we send that out to another availability of them.
That's awesome. Thank you. That's good news.
Kind of going back to John's point of, I mean, that's just another story, right? Between the Narcan that we're putting in, the lives, like, people talk about, you know, public safety, and it's not just police officers, it's everything else. And I just think that's a really good story.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else? Right?
Mayor, I'll get that information to the council, and I'll work with Kathy and Jennifer on doing an article on that. One thing, you reminded me of one other point, which was you mentioned GMA Conference. We did, some of y'all asked about the solar lighting. We are looking at that. And those, and Michael Smith can go into more detail on that if we'll, if y'all, if y'all want to. We're buying, I think, six of those lights, streetlights, or solar lighting to light one intersection, I believe. Michael, we had at the, at Womack and Vormack, wasn't it? Wasn't that intersection?
Yes, they gave us a quote for that intersection, and then the other lights, I think they were gonna do a few in the park.
That's right. That's right.
Speaking of the park, someone told me that the lights in Purnishaw are not working. I'm not even sure I totally knew that we have lights in Purnishaw. But I asked them to email me. I said, I will never remember, but, and I didn't until you just said that, and they never emailed me. But yes, the lights are not working at Purnishaw.
So when you say we got a quote, does that mean?
So when you say we got a quote, does that mean that we're going to put them in or are we still considering? Okay.
No, we're going to buy those.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? Thank you, Eric. Next is a consent agenda. Anybody have any questions or concerns for anything on here? A lot of Cody Dallas. A lot of stormwater.
Movement approved.
Moved by John, second by Rob, any?
I guess I just have one quick question for, is all this covered by, is it, are we discovering it with the ARP money that we put to Stormwater? And then it's being paid for by, out of the Stormwater Fund or just, I'm, I'm just curious. I mean, because that's a lot, you've been busy.
Yes, we are spending down that ARPA funding 100%. And so that will be all allocated with these, with the projects that we have in place. So that, that's a big deal. Spend a lot of money, but very good for our stormwater system.
And we have a motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. I believe when you're ready, you have to read the one business item.
The next item on the agenda is the contract amendment with blunt construction for additional paving on perimeter center parkway. Michael Snick.
This was discussed last meeting and it was, it was about spending some of the surplus we had after getting the additional LMEG money. And we were recommending perimeter center parkway. Councilman Henigan asked a question about should we do more in that area? And we took a look at that and we've added $50,000 worth of paving for the sections of Hammond shown in red there, excuse me, patching, to fix a few areas there that are driving that score down. We also looked at the south end of perimeter center parkway going towards the bridge over 285. And that area was, is still in decent shape. It's not as bad as the area we're paving and we don't really have enough money to, to do all that anyway, but we feel like it's in better shape. So we added $50,000 for additional patching on Hammond.
Okay, that's Stacy.
And then our other question, did the PCID approve?
Yes.
Here, they're in the back.
They, they're here, at their meeting last week, I think they approved all the crosswalk funding, yes.
Can you move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Stacy, second by John. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, I hear none, it passes unanimously. And you're up for the next one too.
Okay, I'll introduce this item and then we're going to have the designer come up and walk you through it. But this item's been discussed a few times in the past, first in 2021 and then again in 2022. And the last time it was discussed, there was general consensus with kind of the overall look of the bridge. And then what they've been doing since then is they went and refined and kind of added some detail to the design. They've been working with the CID, the consultant has been working with the CID on some of their bridges to, to have some cohesiveness there. And then also working with GDOT to make sure that what we want to do, they will allow. And then making changes related to that. And the reason we're bringing this tonight, because GDOT, as I said earlier today, is now saying that we need to enter into the IG, the intergovernmental agreement for the money that the city would contribute to this by next summer is the current timeline. And so what we're here for tonight and Winston Mitchell with Kim Lee Horn, who's working with the city and the CID, we'll, we'll go through it in detail, but we're here really to say, okay, this, these are your options. And you know, how much does the city really want to, uh, and put towards this project so that we can then go work with GDOT to do the intergovernmental agreement? So I'll let Winston come up and go through the details and then at the end we'll get into that discussion.
Thank you. So as Michael said here, just to give a little bit of an update, I know this has been kind of a, an ongoing, uh, long discussion over a couple of different meetings. But we did take a step back just to get a little bit of an update from GDOT to understand what some of their concerns might be with the design. So that we could make sure that what is proposed is something that ultimately they are comfortable with and can be implemented in alignment with the design standards that'll be adopted. So just a little bit of a refresher on the background for this. So there's, this is part of a series of bridges that will be in conjunction with the PCIDs. So Shambly Dunwoody Bridge is outside of the CID, but it is part of a system and to some degree will be similar aesthetically to some of these other bridges. But all of these will be folded into the MMIP program as part of the top end project that GDOT will be working on. So the background for this originally started with a review of the different designs across the CID's and the greater business district in Dunwoody. So really looking at the context of the different design elements, the buildings, existing structures. And we use that to come up with a series of preliminary design concepts, which we then came and discussed with y'all to come up with a preferred alternative, which is what we then used to bring to GDOT to have some discussion, to understand what they did and, and did not like. So the approach that ultimately came out of that, understanding that this is a series of bridges, some of which will be rebuilt completely, some of which will not be rebuilt, they'll just have some additional ramps added to them. So we, we came up with a kit of parts, which allows us to have a unified look to all the bridges, even though they're not all being reconstructed to the same degree. So there's really three levels of enhancement. The first one being enhanced railings with lighting and columns and paint treatments on the walls. The second level of enhancement would be integrating railing pylons with some ornamental uplighting and downlighting. And then the third level of, of enhancement that we would be looking at would be adding a lot more things for the pedestrian experience. So looking at plant, potential planters on the structures, pedestrian shade structures, regional monumentation, things of that nature. So from that, this was the design that we had presented to you the last time we were before y'all. So what we did was we took this to GDOT to ask if they had any heartburn with any of the design elements here. For the most part, they, they were okay with everything. The one item that they, they did have some concern with is these three pylons that you'll see kind of in the middle. They, they didn't really like how close some of the vehicular lanes on 285 would be to the foundations for those. So what we've done is we've gone back and altered the concept a little bit to actually integrate those pylons into the railing system itself on the bridge, rather than something that is freestanding in the ground on its own. So there's a little bit of a benefit to that from a cost perspective. So that's kind of a, a good thing that came out of those discussions. Some of the other recommendations that they had for us were that they don't want a lot of different types of lighting or colors of lighting, I should say, in the pylons. They really want it to be something that's more in sort of the, the white spectrum to amber spectrum. That way there's no confusion with any kind of emergency vehicles or anything of that nature. The other thing that we really were looking at was, you know, we wanted to make sure that this bridge is distinctive, since it is within the city of Dunwoody, but not the CID. But we wanted it to still speak to the greater system of bridges. So moving towards the plan, you'll see here, it's got the 14 foot multi-use trail that will align with the trail that's already been constructed on Shambly Dunwoody Road to the north. A recommended planter, which would carry through some of the same types of low maintenance plantings, like the grasses, some of the things that you've already seen recently installed alongside of the road as well. So the other thing that we really looked at.
Sorry, can you give us some orientation here with this slide here?
Yes, of course.
Can we kind of start a little bit slower and start with what are looking at first and orient where we are to point that? Thank you.
Absolutely. So the top of the screen is going to be looking east. So everything that is, it, it skewed a little bit. So basically this side over here on the left is be, going to be coming into Dunwoody. And so everything on the other side is, pardon, I have it backwards. Sorry, have it backwards. So you're going to be going, uh, northbound is going to be to the right, sorry about that. So what, what, the way the bridge is going to be constructed is it's actually sort of two bridges that are together. So on the top of your screen will be the main vehicle lanes and then the planters in green with the pedestrian shared use path to the, directly above that. The Texas U-turn is actually to get off of the interstate and make a U-turn to get back on without actually having to enter main, the mainstream of traffic.
Are you sure it's not for Savoy and Cotillion?
It's for Savoy, Cotillion, Savoy.
Yep, sorry.
Okay. And so, just so I understand, because anyone that hasn't heard, I'm not very good at maps. The Texas U-turn is closer, the, is further from Ashford Dunwoody on this thing. So the top is closer to Ashford Dunwoody and the bottom is closer to Sham, well, that's Shambly Dunwoody, I guess, or yes. I mean, North Peachtree, it faces North Peachtree.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I had that reversed when I was describing it, my apologies. But then you'll see in the middle, this, this gray section is actually the sidewalk that would be channelized with barriers to protect it from vehicles. And that would be 10 feet wide and have freestanding pedestrian lighting within that, that area. Any other questions before I move to the next slide?
So the lighter gray area is the multi-use?
The one at the top of the screen would be the multi-use trail.
The very, very top van is the multi-use.
How does that align with the trail on Shambly Dunwoody? Okay.
So. Sure, okay. Then this is an elevation of the plan. Again, the, the one difference that, from this that we'll be making is these pylons, these three in the middle that are freestanding will be integrated into the railing system itself, so they won't have that freestanding column below it. It'll be part of the parapet wall itself. So that's just to, to respond to GDOT's comments that they had here. And then I think this might be a little bit more illustrative, maybe than I was in my previous description, this section here. And this shows the trail to one side of the bridge with your railing. And then the, the smaller sidewalk that goes down the middle that's protected between the, the two vehicle lanes.
And that's sort of like what we have in the middle of Ashford Dunwoody today on the bridge?
Exactly, yes.
When, when we get to it, I'll be talking about transitions on either side of that facility and what it will look like. I know we were talking about the bridge, but I'm also wanting to hear about the transitions, what it looks like that 100, 150 feet either side on the pedestrian facilities as well.
Sure. So I don't have a graphic of that in here, but we can definitely discuss how that's all going to work. So that's the, the main part of sort of the, the overall plan and sections. I'm looking at some of the individual elements. We've got a graphic here of the regional pylon and how that would look on the four anchors of the bridge. And which I know we, we shared with y'all last time. And the graphic of the light is just to illustrate that the lighting wouldn't be coming directly at someone who's driving down the freeway. It would be more of a reflected type of lighting, so you'd get kind of a nice glow along the edge of that pylon. Again, for the planters, we were really looking at more grasses, things that are going to be very hardy in the heat and the dry conditions that you're going to get on top of that bridge, because it is a unforgiving environment, I would say. And then also these shade structures, so we proposed two of those along the, the pedestrian way as a little bit of a refuge, because it's about 320 feet across the bridge. So it's a, it's a pretty substantial crossing. And then this last graphic is just showing the rhythm that you would get of this pedestrian railing. Each section's about 10 feet long. And then you get this fin that would have a light that's actually integrated into it. So you would get a glow and a little bit of a rhythm in that railing. So I think probably the, the question people are most interested in is what does this look like from a costing perspective? And so there's going to be a little bit, I would say it's, it's a little bit open-ended, because we have to have some conversations with GDOT. There's some give and take in terms of what the escalation is that they want, because they like to plan for the escalation of costs over a very long time horizon. But that can be negotiated kind of back and forth. But what we're really looking at would be a total for the bridge itself before that escalation. For all of the enhancements would be in the 2.7 to 2.9 million range. And then with GDOT's additional escalation, it's probably going to be closer to 3.5 to 3.7 at the end of the day. So a breakdown of some of those individual parts. The railing system, you're probably looking at about closer to, to 800,000 for all of the lighting that goes into, pardon? It's not in the presentation, but I, I'm happy to share that with y'all afterwards. So the painting system would be about 300 to actually have all of it painted, because GDOT typically does not paint standard concrete infrastructure, like some of the bridges and parapet walls. The lighting and shade structures and plantings on the actual bridge would be about 400 to 600. And then the pylons for both the ones integrated into the railing and the ones on the ends of the bridges, that's going to be right at about a million probably. So that's definitely the biggest line item there. And then, I don't know if we want to stop and discuss that before going to next steps or? Sure.
No, next steps.
Okay, yep. So next steps would really be getting the design finalized and GDOT taking a look at it and saying, okay, it's good to go. We can fold it into the MMIP. And then we would be in a negotiation process to come up with what the final amount would be that the city and the CID would be negotiating. So of course there's this bridge that the, would be coming from the city. And then there are the other bridges that the CID would be paying for. But there would be some sort of agreement with maintenance for how the money all works on that.
Okay, don't go anywhere. All right, so I think we should, before we talk about like the money, we can talk about design and functionality. Who wants to go first? Catherine?
We've seen the new bridges over 400 for the city of Sandy Springs, which clearly say city of Sandy Springs. And these clearly don't say city of Dunwoody.
So we do have a place for that. So in this graphic, there's the, the round medallion, that would be a place for the city of Dunwoody's logo.
Right, and again, we've seen these other bridges that are much more gateways than that is offering. That'll be hard to even read as you're driving. Is, has Sandy Springs agreeing to this on the, their side?
So this is a, so we're still in discussions with Sandy Springs. So I would say indeterminate, in the middle of that discussion.
Yeah, I'm going to be disappointed if we don't see it across the span.
So Tom, Tom, are you there? Has Tom worked on this? And I thought we had agreed to letters. Or Michael, do you remember? I thought we were going to have it say Dunwoody.
That was my recollection as well.
That's Tom's recollection as well. Come back, Michael, please.
Yeah, I do remember it being discussed. I think, you know, one of the challenges, I mean, we can do it, but you know, the part, the one end of the bridge is really technically Brookhaven.
No, it's not. But it's not, it's not. It goes over the ramp. That person who died was credited to Dunwoody and so, yeah. Sorry.
So, so we can put letters on the bridge if, if that's what y'all want to do. That's pretty easy to add, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I thought we had discussed, sorry, I mean, it's true though, the ramp is our responsibility. So I'm just telling you. The, I thought we had discussed putting perimeter on the other bridges and Dunwoody on this bridge.
So we were not putting perimeter on any of the bridges.
We could put Dunwoody on all three, we're okay with that. We are sure are okay with that.
Sure, we'll come back and, and add that back in then.
Thank you. Because we want this to be part of our branding. In all seriousness, we want people to know that they are in Dunwoody and not, I mean, we love perimeter center. Everybody uses Atlanta, but it's Dunwoody, so, okay. Anybody else have design questions? John?
Thank you for the presentation. You tell me, what does the Ashford Dunwoody Bridge look like? I mean, you've said that you've had preliminary, is it, which level of enhancement are you going for Ashford Dunwoody?
So Ashford Dunwoody is a special case right now. It is on pause, because the, there's still some discussion, I don't believe it's been settled as to whether it's going to be completely rebuilt and torn down as part of the MMIP process, or whether they're just going to keep it, keep the same bridge structure and. Keep it, keep the same bridge structure and add the ramps um into it, so that's, that's been paused for now.
Okay, well, we are Sandy Springs' poor cousin.
Right.
And we don't have the same amount of money. I'm not sure what level of enhancement I would be willing to pay for, because it was coming out of my own pocket. I'm not sure I need the top level of enhancement, but there's different functionality and experiences. That will be happening depending on which way you're facing or coming through or under the bridges. These are gateways to the city, and to a certain extent, I want to honor that. I also was driving up and down four hundred a little bit and noticed the different bridges. The one thing I did like about at least one of the bridges was the fact that it named at night, I was driving at night, so I couldn't see all the ornamentation. But I could see the lit sign that said whatever street name it was. So for us, it would be Shambly Dunwoody would be well lit up, Ashford Dunwoody would be all lit up. It's, so it might not be the big Dunwoody branding, but it would still highlight the fact that Ashford Dunwoody and Shambly Dunwoody. I just, I just liked the fact that I knew where I was.
Yep, we can, that's something we can add.
I mean, that's something that I saw of four hundred, again, this, the other level of enhancement. I think it's important, but I'm not sure to the financial level of importance, that's all, I'm just trying to find a happy medium, because I don't need to be. You know, trying to compete with our neighbors who are doing things at a different level. So I'm just trying to, I want to give, offer experiences, but at what price are we, are we willing to pay collectively? For those experiences and those views as we cross our infrastructure.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, Winston, thank you, um what I'd like to get is, I want to kind of do a little value engineering on here, so if you show me the price ticket items bucket list of. How much it costs for stuff? Um the different packages, package A, B, and C, price point um on those things, I'd I'd like to have that, so we can kind of reassess that and look at what things cost. I'd also like to know, um what's, what do we, what if we don't do anything, so this is what G dot will give you. So let's just start with that, what do we get with G dot, okay, with paying nothing? Let's just level set us, okay, can you just tell us, put it out there, this is what we get if you don't do anything, right?
Sure, so if you don't do anything, um there won't be paint on the bridge, it'll be the the standard concrete railing. Um most likely with the chain link fencing that they currently use on a lot of their areas.
And do we get the, do we get what's on the bridge?
The deck itself.
So I.
The width of the deck and the buildout on the, on the, at grade on the deck.
Yes, they, they've committed to putting a path on the bridge. At their expense, um we brought, we wouldn't get the, we would get the width of the bridge, but instead of a planter, you would probably get a, you know, a concrete. Like down here at Ashford Dunwoody, probably get a concrete barrier. And you'd get the path and um I think you'd get the sidewalk too, but again, it would be just in the barrier, okay?
Now that I have been out just recently on Robert's Drive, a week or so ago, and I saw, it's different, it's it's apples and oranges, right? It's just a two-lane road, and on one side they have a multi-use path, but they actually have a, like a, a four-foot type, four-foot tall brick wall. Decorative brick wall separating the multi-use path, there's not planters, it's not vegetation, it's just different, right, it's different buffer. And I don't know what is uh safer, number one, right, for the, for the vulnerable user on that bridge deck. If it's a four-foot concrete wall that has a little decorative facade versus the planters. I know we've kind of talked about the planters before, I don't want to change it completely midstream, but maybe we have that conversation. If we like the planters, or do we want to stick with the planters or like the, hmm, stay as is?
Yeah, planters seem a little impractical.
So if you go, then we could potentially then show us, if you go out to Roberts and check it out, it's a little brick, but it's got a nice, it's like when we put in the sidewalks here, and we have the little.
Retaining walls.
Retaining wall with the decorative thing, it's sort of like that, actually. Um but yeah, to just for me, I just, I just kind of need to see a price list of of options and see what is, what's our out-of-pocket cost to 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 see with that, but.
So I have a big picture question, which is, is that G dot needs to know something, right? We've, you, you've presented the Maserati, I guess, potentially, that's probably not a great example, but the Porsche or something. And is there any, like, if they approve this, and then we decide two years from now, because I had to be frank, you missed a lot of discussion earlier today. Where we're pretty skeptical that this is going to happen, at least while I'm mayor, I have three and a half years left and I'm term limited. Um but if we decide, or a future council decides that they do want the planters, or they want the wall, or they want green light poles, not blue. Or is this stuff all locked in? I mean, because. It takes G dot forever to get anything done, and that's forever is generous, frankly. And so I think that um. I guess part, I hate to edit from the floor, you know, I hate for us to be telling you, you know, this is gonna cost. You know, seven hundred thousand dollars, and we only want to spend three hundred, so what's our option? This is gonna be, you know, whatever, it doesn't seem very practical. On the other hand, as we discussed earlier today, it seems very early to obligate the city to one point eight million dollars. That regardless of what you may believe, it might be ten years before G dot gets to the Shambly Dunwoody Bridge, no matter what G dot is saying, frankly. And so I guess my big picture question is, is can we put together something that we think the city might do? Because they're committed to the width, that's not going to change, whether we pay for it or not, that's not going to change, so we know the bridge is going up. I would hate to see Dunwoody have chain link, I think that would be a terrible look. I think I'll be gone before this bridge is built, but I think it would be, I think there needs to be, I mean, not as mayor. So I think there needs to be minimum standards for, I mean, I think there are things we could say are hard-nosed, but but editing from up here is really impractical. Go ahead, Michael.
Well, I think, I think what we need to move forward is to know what the council's budget target is, and then maybe. What, what are the things that are most important to you um from, from the design? So that we can kind of narrow it down, okay, this is what we can do for this amount of money, and as Winston said. We're, from a cost standpoint, this is all, I mean, he can tell you the fencing is going to cost, I think he said, um. Three, well, he said something was going to cost three hundred thousand dollars. Until we start really getting specific with G dot, uh that may end up, by the time G dot's done, it may be five hundred thousand. So because they do put, we've talked to Sandy Springs, and the C I Ds knows that. When we get to G dot, they're going to put a pretty good markup on it, I think, Kimley Horn has experience with this, so they have built some of that in. But um I, I think what we need is how, how much is the council comfortable spending? And what are the most important elements to try to get in that?
But we're like obligating a future council, potentially a future, future council. But I think we can tell you what's important, I don't know that a dollar amount is probably pretty difficult for us to do.
I will say, me personally, um a lot of this is a want versus a need, and we're a city with porta-potties in our parks right now. Um for me, getting rid of the chain link fence and somehow having City of Dunwoody on it. Anything else to me is, is a want, that's, that's where I am.
So I have fence and Dunwoody, and to me, that's a, a need, Dunwoody.
Yes, that, to me, that's a need, to have something better than chain link fence, to have, you know. A better look than that, and to have Dunwoody, those are my two needs.
And mine is safe pedestrian crossing.
So some type of barrier, right? On the Dunwoody, the name Dunwoody, I just want to clarify, because I think um Councilman McGinnigan said something a little bit different. Are we talking name and the name of the road? Or what, but because it gets confusing, because the road is Shambly Dunwoody Road.
I haven't seen the bridge he's talking about.
Yeah, the way I was just hoping that would have their street names on it, it just so happens that we have Ashford Dunwoody, Shambly Dunwoody, it's, it's a sense of.
Can we get Shambly to, Shambly's there, we can, can we get them to split the cost?
I don't know, um I mean, we, I think the sa- I think this uh Sandy Springs Bridge, it has, like the one I saw, it has Pitts Road.
Yes.
In the middle, and then I think the Sandy Springs logo is off to the side.
Right, I thought the logo was like in the concrete, no.
Yeah, it's stamped in there.
Yeah, I'll take a look at, another look at it, but um. And I'll just say, as far as committing a future council, it.
That's how everything works.
Well, the, we can talk, I mean, G dot, yes, we're, this timeline has moved a lot, but all we can do is operate on what they're telling us now, which is. They want our agreement by next summer, which leaves us a little bit of time, but, but not a lot of time to kind of start nailing this down. And once that agreement's signed, that commits, that's the funding commitment.
Let me ask about something else you said, so G dot is gonna, we're gonna have to commit to G dot that we're gonna do this, and then they mark up what they charge us?
That will be part of the negotiation, is this, this is what we want to do, and then they're gonna say, well, here's the cost today with, with escalators. You know, for when this actually will get built, and uh yes, I, I mean, there's a back and forth about how much. Because they don't really know, they don't want to take on the risk, because they haven't signed a contract with their contractor, so they don't want to commit. The city says, we'll give you a million dollars, and then when they bid it out and get a contractor, it costs them, it costs two million, they want to make sure they're covering themselves.
Sorry. We're designing from the floor, um go ahead, John. Yeah, I, I think, given that we don't have to have this till next year, I mean, a, less than a year from now, I think it gives us an, you an opportunity to. I had, I only had three priorities, were there not more? Safe pedestrian crossing, Dunwoody and fence, Tom, are you there? Because you've worked on this with me for a while.
Yeah, I'm here.
Did you say lighting is part of the pedestrian cross?
Tom?
Yes.
Do you have anything?
Um I do have a, a couple just quick comments, uh.
Talk louder, please.
Okay, sorry, oh, um the, the uh, the benches and shade structures on the bridge. Um we got a, an email from a resident over the weekend, it kind of made sense to me, I mean, I don't know that we want to encourage people to be stopping and sitting on a bridge over an interstate. I think that's an easy spot to save money, in my opinion, I mean, I don't see the purpose in having those on the bridge. Um I know that's probably a smaller end of the cost spectrum, but every place where we could save some money. Uh to Stacy's point, there are wants versus uh needs, um I, I mean, this is just me speaking personally. Uh I like the columns, but that price tag seems insane, one million dollars for a couple of columns, I mean, I don't, I don't. Like building them out of gold, I mean, it seems um crazy that that's the price tag and the estimate. One question, uh when we were originally talking about this, you talked about lighting and G dot not wanting the colors, but do the columns as designed in this, do they have LED lighting in them?
Yes, they do, they, it would be illuminated.
Um yeah, but I, I mean, I think I share uh the priorities, uh the mayor has pointed out that, you know, uh pedestrian, safe pedestrian crossing and the, and. That being barrier separated and having lighting and the decorative fence um would certainly be my priorities. You know, I do like the columns, uh I don't know if a smaller scale makes them more affordable, but I mean, a million dollars for columns seems a little crazy in, in my opinion.
I think the other thing that makes this a little hard, and I see Anne back there, is if the Ashford Dunwoody Bridge is on pause for remodeling, I guess is what they're saying. Then what are we matching? Yeah, like what are we matching?
Yeah, so there's actually a, a series of six bridges throughout the district, so it would be Perimeter Center Parkway. Mount Vernon, uh Hammond Road, Glenridge Connector, um and Johnson Ferry.
Right, to John's point, we are the poor church mouse in this scenario, and I think when we talked about it earlier. I mean, it's been a few years, but Tom and I worked on it together with staff, the thing that we were going to have in common was the ingredient, so to speak, the pieces you showed earlier. My number one priority besides safe pedestrian crossing, and that should include lighting, is the Dunwoody. It's the Dunwoody, because people, they're in Dunwoody. And um, you know, I don't care, I, I'm not, I want it to be incredibly aesthetically pleasing, but if Ashford Dunwoody is going to look different anyway, then it doesn't really matter. If the whole series is the same, and it almo- the, the distance between the smallest distance in the scenario are the three Dunwoody Bridges, then you get pretty far from Sandy Springs, right? Because Mount Vernon is pretty far down, it's.
So this would be Mount Vernon over four hundred, so.
So it's totally, it's a whole different interstate, it's a whole different road, to my point, right? I mean, it, it, we should, we should worry, I know y'all have to worry, the C I D has to worry about all of them. We need to worry about the one we have to fully pay for, and then the aesthetics of the other two, so that they blend. But Mount Vernon's like, I understand it's all part of the district, but it's a whole different world, nobody's going to see them in sup- in, in sequence.
Right, so the other one that would be close, but closest would be Perimeter Center Parkway.
What I said, oh, perimeter, yeah, the three in a row, right? Those three need the common, the common, whatever you call it, the look, right, the, the parts. You know, I, again, I would be very generous and say they all three could say Dunwoody.
But I will say, if Perimeter Center Parkway decides to put on columns, I'm still not putting columns on the Shambly Dunwoody one, but that's just too much.
Right. Too much money, too much money, too much.
Ask him to tell you what they're anticipating on the perimeter.
Okay.
Sure, so the Perimeter Center Parkway Bridge actually does not have the large columns on the outside, it just has the railing. Because it is an enormously long bridge, and they would kind of look like they were floating, just because there would be so many of them.
Okay.
So just, again, the look and feel, if you look up again, I just saw G dot has a video that shows their Pitts Road new bridge and stuff, so. In the middle, you can see there's a Sandy Springs, a big S, and then spelled out Sandy Springs, and it's illuminated, but it's might only be physically this big and this big. But then the road name is there, and it's subdued, and it's back or lit, and so it just, it's a very pleasant uh appearance.
And again, for me, the naming of the road affects thousands of people driving at night, that will see Shambly Dunwoody thousands of times going under. That every time they drive, and some people will see it for the first time and only time, and to know where they're at, and others will see it every day, so I don't know, I just. To me, I thought it was a nice add, I, I like seeing the Pitts Road.
I bet there's a way to do both. And I was, I travel a lot domestically, and there are a lot of places where the bridges, you know, you're going, you're quickly transf- transitioning between one city and another city. And the bridges are not necessarily cohesive and it works. Not saying that that's what I'm recommending, but I'm saying we can figure this out, but it's clear that council is not today. That's the problem with this decision-making matrix, is you're asking us to spend money at a time when we just don't have very much.
Sure.
And so ten years from now, you know, I'm very skeptical that this is going to happen anytime soon, obviously, I've made that really clear. Another council down the road could be so mad at us, because we didn't choose to do all the bells and whistles, and they might be flush with cash.
Yeah, so it, it is the case that once uh the agreement is signed with G dot, it's, so the, the whole idea is to try and craft as strong a set of design guidelines as you can. Because once it gets folded into their process, it's, it, the city loses control over changing or or guiding that process.
Right.
Back to the transitions for the uh multi-use path and then the sidewalk as well. Uh right, so what does that look like on both sides, uh? How would that look like? I know, because, yeah, you've got an entrance, entrance ramp, we have a multi-use path on that. On the uh.
Yeah, there, there are islands with the, the slip lane, so there would be a transition across those.
Yeah, is it gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be like, you just push, you gotta have a signalized thing, I guess, for the user.
That, that's going to be part of the G dot design, it really wouldn't be part of this, and I don't. We could look at the concept and see what it shows, but I think they're going to say that that's all still. Kind of, you know, because it's a design build, and none of that's really settled. But, but once you get off the bridge, how they connect into the bridge will all be part of their project.
It's just important that they have a dedicated green where it's red in the other directions for the user on that multi-use path going two ways, yeah.
So I think, I mean, what I've heard is name a city on the bridge, road name on the bridge, fencing, a railing. And a, a barrier for the pedestrians. Uh lighting, lighting, okay, so we'll go back and narrow it down to just those elements. And come up, come back with that and a cost estimate um to, to take another look at it. I mean, that, that's helpful to know what. I mean, that, that's helpful to know what, what we need to design for.
Thank you.
City manager comments, no comments. Council comments, anybody?
All right. Well, yeah, the, we are having a connect with the council for District Two, Councilman Price and myself this Thursday morning at Crema Coffee, espresso coffee at, from eight AM to 10 AM at Crema. And then Saturday, the fourteenth over at Farmers Market, Brook Run Farmers Market from nine to 12, connect with coffee with council.
Nice. Anybody else? Seeing none. We don't have executive session. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move by Stacy.
Second.
Second by John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And adjourned.